Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council April 21st, 2015, meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Also like to remind you if have any electronic devices, if you would silence them at this point in time. Call our Mayor Pro Tem Silo Fossett for tonight's invocation.
We bow our heads in a moment of silence, please.
Next item on the agenda is the proclamation. First proclamation is the Maker Day in Burlington, April 25th, 2015. This time we'd recognize Ben Harris. Mr. Harris, if you could come forward, please. Proclamation proclaiming April 25th, 2015, Maker Day in Burlington, whereas our nation is home to a long line of innovators who have fueled our economy and transformed our world, and whereas Burlington boosts a rich history of manufacturing, and whereas the maker movement is sweeping through Burlington, providing a current of excitement that is inspiring thinkers, inventors, designers, and engineers to get creative and use their brains and hands to make things, and whereas the maker movement is part of a larger strategy to boost America's manufacturing and entrepreneurship in local communities, whereas on July 14th, 2014, City of Burlington accepted Manufacturers Alliance of Communities Mayor's Maker Challenge, and whereas the Alamance Makers Guide was formed in 2011 as a community for makers who live in and around Alamance County to share their talents, knowledge, skills, and ideas with each other and the world, and whereas the Fourth Annual Burlington Mini Maker Fair will be held at Holly Hill Mall on April 25th, 2015, as a celebration of making things, modifying things, and being creative, and therefore be it resolved that I, Ronnie K. Wall, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2015, as Maker Day in Burlington, encourage residents to attend the Burlington Mini Maker Fair and discover the maker movement in Burlington firsthand. This the 21st day of April 2015. Congratulations, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, sir. Feel free to say a few words as you like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. This is great to get recognition of the maker movement here in Burlington. We're really proud of the fact that our Burlington Mini Maker Fair now in its fourth year is one of the enabling factors that makes Burlington be one of the first four cities in North Carolina to be recognized by the White House as a maker city. This is a big achievement for our area, and we're proud to be a part of that. I'd like to take a quick second to acknowledge and thank all of the people that helped produce our free-to-the-public event. Our producer, Ilsa Spawn, is here tonight. We also have Angie Parish, Lee Atkinson, and Danny Oakley are main producers. Without their tireless efforts outside of their day jobs and their families and all their other stuff that they do, we wouldn't have the Maker Fair. Thanks to our volunteers, thanks to Holly Hill Mall and Business Center for helping to provide this event to the public, and thanks to our sponsors. Follow the Alamance Makers Guild online and see what we're doing. There is a Maker Week declared by the President for June 12th to June 18th to support the maker movement nationwide. We plan a lot of activities for around Burlington and Alamance County for that time. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We appreciate you bringing recognition to the City of Burlington and Alamance County as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is National Drinking Water Week, May 3rd through the 9th, 2015. This time I'd recognize Water Resources Director Bob Patterson. Mr. Patterson. Proclamation proclaiming May 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as National Drinking Water Week in the City of Burlington, whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution to practice water conservation, to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore be it resolved that by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Burlington, I do hereby proclaim May 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Burlington. Mr. Patterson? Feel free to speak.
Mayor Wall and Council, on behalf of the Water Resources Department, we thank you for this recognition and celebration of National Drinking Water Week, which was founded over 35 years ago by the American Water Works Association, which is the primary organization for drinking water professionals in the U.S. All of our staff are well-trained and professionals, and they certainly recognize and appreciate this recognition, and recognize your efforts and previous council's efforts to provide our city an adequate, robust water supply and your continued support. So we certainly thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Next item on the agenda is a presentation to council. This time we'd recognize United Way of Alamance County, Heidi Norwick, President. Welcome, Ms. Norwick.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, city staff. On behalf of the United Way Board of Directors, I am pleased to report that we would like to support public transportation with a $100,000 contribution. The board approved this contribution at its March 26th meeting, stating that "We plan to work in partnership with Mike Nun and the City of Burlington to develop a way to most effectively utilize these funds, subject to our board's approval." This would open doors for our agencies and the citizens that we all strive to assist. The City of Burlington is taking the lead to bring this service to our community, and we are excited to support the council and offer an alternative for folks to get to work, school, or health and human service appointments. United Way works with our partners to deliver programs and services that target community needs centered on the building blocks of life, a quality education that leads to stable employment, financial stability, health, and family stability. We believe the infrastructure will prove to assist many of the local nonprofits and the clients they serve. Thank you for your leadership on this important issue.
Wow. That's very exciting. Thank you.[1117.13][1117.13](APPLAUSE) I also noticed, Ms. Norwick, that you have some of your staff here and also some of your leadership you'd like to recognize.
I would like to. At this time, I'd like to recognize Bill Gomri, who is the Chairman of the Board of the United Way, and our Campaign Chair, Griffin McClure, who is our incoming Board President, and we have staff here, Barrett Thompson, Julie McEachire, sorry, April Durr, and we even have one of our Elon students with us, Lizzie.
Wow. Thank you all for being here. This is a great evening for the City of Burlington. We appreciate what United Way does for our community. $100,000 would go a long way, and we are very grateful for that. Any other comments from council?
We have a big check. We would love to have a picture with you.[1167.15][1167.15](LAUGHTER)
A check wrote in here.
Yeah.[1175.01][1175.01](LAUGHTER)
Okay.
What's the...
That's right.
I guess it's made five in 20,000 dollars.[1183.65][1183.65](LAUGHTER)
Check.
Do you want one?
We're simply excited.
I'm sorry. All right, everyone. One, two, three.
You good?
He's ready?
Now, I'm good.
Last opportunity, Thomas.
Technical difficulties.
Thank you.
You have...
Something else.
Thank you, Doctor.
Better.
Yeah, Tom.
The picture back.
That's pretty good.
Can you get that everywhere?
Nice buzzer.
So we got some nice buzzers.
Once again, Ms. Norwick, thank you very much. Great, great gift. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics. This time we'd recognize City Clerk Renee Ward. Ms. Ward.
The council is our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. If this time has appeared any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None. Thank you. Next item's approval of minutes, April 7th, 2015, City Council meeting.
Move. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. A to set the date for advertising, 2014, unpaid taxes for May 8th, 2015. B to approve a final plat for First Burlington Ventures Incorporated, the properties located south of East Maple Avenue and south of West Hardin Street, as shown on plans by Carolina Cornerstone Surveying, dated February 27th, 2015, and containing four lots. C to approve a final plat for Heather Road Investors. A, properties located east of Alamance Road and south of Heather Road, as shown on plans by Basel Survey Incorporated, dated November 7th, 2014, containing two lots. D to adopt a resolution authorizing donation of one MSA FIT testing kit disposed of by the city to Mount Hope Volunteer Fire Department pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-274. E, budget amendment 2015-15, CDBG Home Program Loan Repayments, spelled out in your agenda.
Move the adoption of the consent agenda.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Next item's a public hearing. One, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application rezoned from O&amp;I Office Institutional District and MFA Multi-Family District to CDB Conditional Business for the use of a multi-family 72-unit senior residential development. Properties located at the east end of Trebek Court and south of South Church Street, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 12-16, Lot 51. A valid protest petition has been received. This time, recognize Ms. Amy Nelson. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This zoning request has the recommendation of staff and the city's technical review committee, and was recommended from the Planning and Zoning Commission on a vote of four to two, with the use and development conditions submitted. The commission also recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect this rezoning. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Staff is here to answer any technical questions you may have, and Mr. Longest is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Longest, would you like to speak before we go into the public hearing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Frank Longest. I'm a local attorney representing the applicant Zimmerman Properties SE LLC of Charlotte, North Carolina. I'm proud to present to you their application, which is basically a request to add additional units to this proposed project. By our right, in accordance with the code, they could build a project with 58 units, and the purpose of this rezoning is to add units to have a total of 72 units. As Ms. Nelson mentioned, both the TRC and the staff have looked at the plans as submitted and have approved those. The Planning and Zoning Commission has favorably made a recommendation for approval. So we're here tonight to ask the council's approval so that, in essence, we can construct the additional 15 units for this project. And you may say, why the 15 additional units if you can already do the project? Well, to be perfectly candid and blunt, the idea is to have additional units. It makes the project that much more economically viable to add amenities to it. In other words, there can be more scale to the project that can add amenities for the pleasure and benefit of the potential residents here. The residents, as we know it, are all tied to being geared to people who are 55 years of age or older. As you can see from the color of my hair, I fit in that category now. So I'm interested in making sure that we all have good housing for senior citizens. This project, obviously, is one that I think can be of benefit to this particular area of Burlington and is compatible, as the staff has suggested, with the adjoining properties. The project would consist of 36 units of one bedroom and 36 units of two bedrooms. Now, you have to understand because of federal regulations applicable to this type of project, the limitations with regard to the residents require that every unit has to have at least one resident who is 55 years of age or older. And you may say, why not have a higher restriction on all the others? Well, quite bluntly, some people marry a younger spouse, and so you have to have a flexibility according to the regulations to make sure that if someone is 55 or older and has a younger spouse, that they're not denied access to this particular type project. The applicant has endeavored to try to get input from his adjoining neighbors for this project. They've had at least three, what they would call meet and greet, opportunities for input. I went to one last evening, and bluntly, there were a lot of questions asked, and a lot of the people who joined the property have expressed concerns about it. I think those concerns, obviously, anybody would have as to a property being rezoned. I'm not sure necessarily that those are all justified, but each person is entitled to his own opinion. To give you an example, and excuse me for deviating, I had last week the opportunity to be in Dallas, North Carolina, in a three-hour public hearing on a cell tower, and the opposition was pretty strong. But the best opponent, I have to relay his objection to you. The cell tower is going to be built across the street from a cemetery, and this gentleman was very senior citizen. I'd say he had a hard time getting up to the podium. He got there and reminded all of us that his wife was interred in that cemetery, and although he's not a resident of Dallas and didn't have a right to speak in opposition, he wanted everybody to know his opposition because he planned on being buried beside his wife. And in the good Christian tradition, he and his wife are buried facing to the east. And it was his opinion that when Gabriel blew his horn and the coming was announced and he was to meet his Lord, that he didn't want to see that cell tower, and he got up from the grave. And what do you say to that? You can't oppose that. You can't object to that. But I did note to myself that the cell tower was north of the property and not east. But be that as it may, I think we can all understand that we hear the statement many times, and you're familiar with it. I don't want this project in my backyard. I don't want this project in my neighborhood. But we're all called upon, I think, to be mindful, to look at a project on its merits. This particular project meets all the criteria... I don't want this project in my backyard. I don't want this project in my neighborhood. But we're all called upon, I think, to be mindful, to look at a project on its merits. This particular project meets all the criteria of the code for the city of Burlington, except for the additional 15 units that we're requesting. And we believe those 15 additional units will be a betterment for the project and be a betterment for the community that this project will serve. And I'd like to call upon one of the people who represents the owner, Tab Bullard. He can give you the details with regard to the project itself, the amenities, and the specifications. And then we also have a technical expert here, Michael Osborne, who is an engineer, who can give responses to any questions you may have with regard to the project, the site plan, et cetera. As you are well aware, because of the nature of this project and the nature of the rezoning request, the site plan is all-important with regard to your review and approval, and this carries forward for many years to come unless there's a minor deviation. I will say this, with the initial site plan and from the input of the neighbors and the input from the P&amp;Z Board, although the site initially met all the requirements of the parking regulations and code of the city of Burlington, the developer has been able to reconfigure and add 15 more parking places on-site and will be able to maybe possibly reconfigure with another working, depending on stormwater drainage issues, another 10 spaces, but I'll let Mr. Osborne speak to that if you have questions about it. The other thing I think we need to be aware of is that the site and where it's located should not be an impediment to any vehicle traffic coming in and out. It's all easy access through Tribeca Court and then Tribeca Drive that goes to a stoplight on Church Street. There is a second access off Tribeca Court that's a roadway that runs between Tribeca Drive and the actual Church Street by O'Reilly's. And if you're familiar with that street, you go down that street to get Church Street from this particular site, and you have a right-hand turn. If you're coming into the site by this method of ingress, it is a right in. So the traffic has two means of getting in and out of this project that should not interfere with any of the adjoining neighbors. The site plan has been suggested and prepared for you, has addressed all the issues with regard to stormwater, and those things that are normally applicable have been reviewed and checked off by the TRC. I won't belabor all those points, but we do have an engineer here in case anyone has a particular question with regard to those items. Mr. Bullard, would you mind providing your information with regard to the developer and this particular project?
Mayor Wall, members of the council, city staff, thank you all for this opportunity. We appreciate you hearing our comments, listening to our presentation for the proposed villas at Tribeca Court. Mr. Longest, thank you so much for your representation and input from a local contributing member of the community of Burlington. As indicated, my name is Tab Bullard. I am authorized representative of Zimmerman Properties Southeast LLC. We are a multifamily housing community developer who have developed 80, over 80 properties since 2001, totaling over 6,000 units, all of which we still own, operate, and manage personally. We have chosen this property, this location, owned by Mr. George Keck. It's a 3.71-acre site, as indicated, 72 units per person 55 and older. We currently have about 2,000 units that target that same population, so we're very familiar with the marketing to leasing and operations necessity to provide a community, a home, to that population. In addition, we have chosen this area of Burlington, being on the west side, a designated high-opportunity area with tremendous services, conveniences, and amenities for our targeted population. A third-party market study has been commissioned for our property, for our proposal, by the state agency, and that market study came back indicating an extremely strong need for this type of development. I can provide more specifics if you would like, but in short, basically, there are a minimum of 550 households that qualify to live in this residence and have needs arising for this type of building. We take pride in every asset that we develop and build. We do quality design work using people that are respected in this industry. Mike Osborne, our civil engineer who is here to represent us, he's done every single one of our properties for the most part, and they are highly regarded civil engineers in working with city staff, city engineer services, to put together a property that will meet the needs of the community and us as the developer on earth property. What we are proposing is a four-story building where the center core is four stories, but then you've got the end units that are going to be a three-story property. And we've done this to accommodate the higher units, the 72 units. But we also believe that this brings to the community a multi-elevational roofline property that gives a very architecturally appealing aesthetic. It brings something to the community that, when you look at, you're going to wonder, what is this property? It looks fantastic, and if it's housing, you probably would want to live there. That's how we feel about it. That's how we market it, and that's what most of our residents express once they move into our sites. As I kind of indicated, the properties we've developed since 2001, we're not a fly-by-night developer. So we're not coming in here asking to develop an asset in your property, stabilize it, and flip it to some REIT. We're going to be the owners of this property for 15, 20, 30 years. So who I'm representing today is who you will be working with and communicating with for the very long foreseeable future of this property. As far as on the property, we will have full-time onsite property management and property maintenance personnel. They will both be supported nationally as well as regionally. We've got two properties that we've already constructed in North Carolina, one in Roanoke Rapids, being a 55 and older community. It basically leased up in about four months. We've also got a 56-unit family deal that leased up in about six months in Mocksville. We are currently in the construction process of building 60 units in Mount Airy, similar 55 and older community, and we're about to, we're getting ready to try and close on the 88-unit family deal in Claremont, North Carolina. As far as the building itself, we pride ourselves in providing a safe, affordable place to live. We have secured access to the property. Everything would be key card access. We have onsite security systems to maintain oversight of the property, the building, so that we can address and help rectify any concern citizens may, our residents may have. We're very active in the management and oversight of our properties. We will have appropriate security lighting around the property so that it's properly lit daytime or nighttime and dawn hours. And as was indicated, we've held public meet and greets, and one of the concerns was foot traffic. Well, we've offered, and we're willing to offer, as a condition, to put up a type of fencing. We're trying to preserve as much natural barriers to the, leaving as much landscaping, if you will, that's on the site. But if there's a desire to have fencing to provide that additional barrier to restrict foot traffic around our property, we're more than willing to accommodate that for the city as well. Parking was discussed as well, where we have worked out additional 15 units with what we feel we can get an additional 10 for a total of 25 additional parking spaces. But in addition to that, we've actually reached out to an adjacent property owner, and we feel that we can actually work out even additional off-site parking for guest purposes. So basically overflow parking on the event for Easter Sunday visitations. So we've heard the concerns, and while we meet the requirements of the city zoning ordinances, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we provide safe, sufficient, and easily accessed parking for our residents and their potential guests. And to wrap it up, understanding what has happened here today and having done research myself in leading up to it, this generous check from the United Way, we feel this property would be an absolute user of any public transportation that is brought to the city. Tribeca Court and that area would benefit tremendously from mass transit, and we would market and support that to our residents and offer to educate them and enlighten them on the benefits of using public transportation. So thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions you all may have regarding Zimmerman Properties. And now I'd like to introduce Mike Osborne, our civil engineer, to discuss more key components of the design and layout of the property.
Thank you. Michael Osborne, Cal Valley Engineering, representing Zimmerman Investments. I'll be very brief. I think most of the issues have been addressed. But with that, I know one of the comments that has come up through the various meetings we've held with the residents deals with parking. And as has been stated multiple times, while we do comply with your current parking numbers, we do understand the need for occasional overflow parking and things of that nature. And so the more parking we can get, the better project will have. One of the things that's always critical, though, with the development is the balancing between impervious areas and pervious areas and ensuring that you can maintain the proper balance with stormwater runoff. We've got a fairly large areas throughout the site itself to provide for treatment of stormwater runoff and ultimate partial detention and full detention of stormwater runoff. As working with your staff, we have actually learned that there is a regional detention basin that this property was part of and could be incorporated into down Tribeca Court ways. And with that, it would allow us the opportunity to reduce some of the detention basins on-site. That would not reduce the amount of stormwater treatment that we would do, but would reduce the areas that we would need for detention by allowing the detention to happen downstream. As we continue to work with your staff, we know that we can pick up at least an additional 10 parking spaces by going through and making some modifications to that. And that's just more of what we've heard, in particular, last night's meeting of what about the special parking when you have guests and things? And could you do something to increase the parking? So that's one of the things we've looked at with that. And as we continue to work with your staff, we can probably bring forth potentially even a few more stalls than that. And that would put us more than in excess of 25 to 30% of your requirement of one stall per unit with the development we have in place. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have technically regarding the site design and look forward to your input on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, which means that anyone that would like to speak, pro or con, in reference to this topic, would be allowed to speak. So we'll start on this side. Anyone that would like to speak on this topic, please come forward.
I guess I will start. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, for allowing us to be here. A lot of the folks here, I'm representing myself and our family. We don't have a cell tower. Okay, I just wanted to tell you that, Frank. But I do qualify age-wise also, so, but my hair is not quite as light.
If you would, just state your name and address for the record.
David Weskot. The, we, we're interested because we've got eight acres adjoining this property. I think about 15%, 17% of their property adjoins us. I'll make it brief, as I know you like it that way, Mr. Mayor. But I think our concerns have made it, our negative concerns outweigh the positive concerns in this regard. You're talking about putting 200 people, roughly, and I could be wrong one way or the other, 200 residents in a three-and-a-half acre situation. We talked about parking still a concern, certainly. You know, as you heard initially, they had 72 spots, and yes, they are working in that regard to enlarge it. But the traffic on Tribeca will still be a challenge. I think Ivies have expressed some concern. I can't speak for him, but he's expressed that to us before. Foot traffic or pedestrian traffic will be a concern from that standpoint. We, our lot itself, we have our challenges with security, and I could see that increasing quite a bit in the future. Property values, and I think that's something that the residents and Delaney want to talk about also. But property values is a major concern to me and our family. The, and you know, obviously, we've been talking to the folks at Delaney. They're not only our neighbors, but our customers, and we express a lot of the same concerns. It was referred to that we had a meeting last night. I think there were 16, 17 people there. When they all signed in, they said they were opposed to it. I think only one of that group. I think there's another petition that got submitted to the city. I don't think it was under the proper guidelines from the folks. It was another 20 residents that opposed it. So for those reasons, I'm opposed to it, our family's opposed to it, the Delaney folks. And so at this point, I would like to ask for your votes to vote against this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Weskot. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
My name's Mary Ann Taylor Hicks. I live at 2223 Delaney Drive. I am part of Delaney Crossing Homeowners, and some of the homeowners have asked me to speak on their behalf. There are numerous concerns. One is property values, of course. The other is the additional traffic. Another concern is the foot traffic that would go through our development as more and more people live in a very confined area. Personally, I'm concerned for the residents at the villas. When I see 72 units being put on 3.71 acres, I wonder how they're going to fit all those people. There are not going to be enough parking spaces, one per unit. These people are 55 years old. I'm over 55. I still work. If they're married, they have two cars, not one. There's one parking space per unit. They're talking about additional parking spaces. Is it enough? I don't think so. The other thing that isn't mentioned is that they're going to pack these people in like sardines. This is low-to-moderate income housing. They deserve a nice place to live. It's going to be very attractive. There's no question about that. The problem is they're packing the people in like sardines. Do they deserve that? There's going to be no sidewalks. If these people don't have cars and so they don't need the additional parking places, how do they plan to get around with no sidewalks? Where are they going to walk? Certainly, they're not going to cross Highway 70 or Church Street to get to the Harris Teeter to do their grocery shopping. That's really not a good possibility. We're going to have additional people wandering through the neighborhood. Of course, we're worried about that. Most of the people who live in Delaney Crossing are over 55, and we are concerned about safety. When you look at where this unit, this villa is going to be put, the front of the building is going to face the back of a shopping center, a shopping center that appears to be about 90% vacant. I know I personally would not want to live looking at the back of a decrepit shopping center. If you look on the backside, they're talking about, well, there's going to be a wall of dirt because it's much lower than Delaney Crossing. I don't want to look out my windows at a wall of dirt. They're going to be four stories high. The people on the second and third stories are going to be looking in the windows at Delaney Crossing, and the people at Delaney Crossing are going to be looking in their windows. We need affordable housing for people, certainly older people. There's no question about that. But I want to see affordable housing for people that allows them some dignity. Where's the dignity in this project when you get to look out your windows at the back of a decrepit shopping center or a wall of dirt? There is not enough room on that property to put the development that they're talking about. We do not pack people in like sardines. There is no human dignity in that. We need affordable housing for seniors, I agree, but why don't we try to give them someplace nice to live? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Anyone else that would like to speak on this side?
Yes, sir. Andrew Carter, 2229 Delaney Drive. We moved in in October. We absolutely love Delaney Crossing. We're on third-floor unit, and right now, Delaney Crossing has the illusion of being an oasis. When you walk around the property, it looks like you're out in the country. At nighttime, there's no, there's no light pollution. There's no noise pollution, anything like that. My fear is that when you put in a facility like this, that they're talking about having all the proper lighting and everything to make it a safe facility over there, it's just going to, it's just going to brighten everything up at night for us. Also, you know, he says you're going to see a roofline that, you know, is going to be attractive, and people are going to want to live there. But the problem is, it's not going to be attractive to us because it's, right now, we have beautiful sunsets we get to watch and look. to watch and look at, and you're, you're taking that away from us completely. And with a four-story unit that, you know, he says it's only gonna be four to five feet higher than our building. And my suggestion to them last night was, well, then, then lower it, you know? If you're talking about four to five feet, lower it. Make it, make it level with it, you know? That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Norma Scott, and I'm one of the original owners for Delaney Crossing. I bought my unit when the building wasn't even there. I bought it off of a floor plan so I can understand the aesthetics of a place, buying it off of a nice fancy-looking place like that, that they have designed. But this is not Charlotte. This is not Asheville. This community is a retired community mainly. A lot of the residents, they downscaled from big homes, and they came to Delaney Crossing with some security. And it's nestled in an area that wasn't highly trafficked then. I myself have a mother who, I was, I traveled a lot when I first bought it, and I felt very comfortable leaving her there, that she would be attended to because of the community there. And so, now, you bring, you change the whole aesthetics of the, of the subdivision. And you talk about property value. We also pay, we have to pay for maintenance, association fees, and that could be another cost for us that with a community like this so close, now they have to add more landscaping. You have to have more contractors come in and repair damages. And I feel offended because this, these developers didn't even ask our opinion. They just came up with their designs, laid a nice fancy plat out there, and they want you to accept it, and they want us to go along with the program. Well, no. I would say, I haven't gone around taking signatures, but I would tell you that at least 90% of the residents are not satisfied with this company coming in and disturbing. A lot of us are on the back end. We'd be looking into someone else's balcony. We already have noise level. We have the school there, but the school is controlled. We know the school is in, and they come out at a certain time. We've got the nice fancy Gold's Gym over there. That's traffic over there. And we also have Lowe's. Lowe's has not been as agreeable as Mr. Dave Westcott has with lowering their loudspeaker volume in their garden area. 3:00 in the morning, we already get people on the, on the loudspeaker. I don't care who's on picking up intercom number two when I'm trying to get some sleep at night. So, these are just more things that are gonna come into this community to make it more noise. 100, did they tell you that they're gonna be 150 feet from us? Somebody walked 150 feet. If you have a 20,000-square-foot property, would you want your neighbor to be 150 feet from you? They're gonna have picnic areas and garden. That's all very nice. But you're gonna put a garden on three acres? That means that I'm gonna be looking in somebody's garden. Picnics, picnics bring noise. They bring people. It's very nice. But if you want to get some sleep, you don't necessarily want to hear people having a picnic. So, we would hope that the council would vote down this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Yes?
Good afternoon. Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Councilpeople, Madam Councilman saw you last night. My name is Fred Frisell. I live at 111 Delaney, 2227 Unit, Delaney Crossing. I also happen to be president of Condominium Association, but I'm here as a homeowner and not particularly, not in the capacity of the president. But as president, I've talked to quite a few people, and I think I should express what they've expressed to me. I've had quite a few conversations with Tad Ballard over here. He's very personable, and he knows his stuff. If I was doing this project, I'd have him doing it for me. But I went to the first meeting that they had upstairs, was it upstairs, down here? Anyway, I was the only one there, and I had a nice long talk with him. Didn't know anything about the project at all. And naturally, he put all the goodies on me, and when I left, I said, "Well, this sounds like a pretty nice project." But that was two weeks ago, I believe it was. And since that time, I've talked to a lot of people around our units, and they've expressed the various opinion. But the main thing everybody thinks about is the property value. And we, the people that live in Delaney are well over 55. I'll be 90 next year, and I'm gonna have a long time to be there. And so, that's what I think about it, too. And my wife, hopefully, she outlives me. She's not as old as I am. But if she outlives me, well, she'd at least have the opportunity to sell the place and get some money out of it. And the property value has already decreased some since we, well, I bought there in 2008, and the property values have come down on the place. But the main thing I want to point out is these people are elderly that are there, and they're concerned about their property values as well as we are. And I don't know is, whether the project has been approved. Are we here to get approval or disapproval? Can you vote against the property? Or are we here to change the zoning so you can build extra units? That's a question I don't know the answer to.
We'll discuss that shortly.
Thank you.
Are you sharing with the council and the rest that you married a younger lady? Are you sharing with the council that you married a younger lady? I thought so. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Frisell.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Come right up, Ms. Porterfield. Yes, you do. Sorry. I understand. I've heard that voice before.
I have, too.
I am not.
No, I am Margaret Porterfield, and I do live at Delaney Drive, and I love it there, and everybody does, okay? But my big concern, which I discussed last night, and this young man sitting over here, I think, I think he said that they agreed that they would put a fence up between us. Because all of you know that Smith School is right below us, okay? And the only paved way for those children, and there are gonna be children, in fact, one of the ladies that works with somebody was told that she, since it was gonna be 55, that she was gonna be one of the first to register. But she's a grandmother, and she has five grandchildren that she's raising, bless her heart. But the dad's in prison, and the mama's on dope, and she's gonna be, are gonna supposedly be moving in there. And there will be some people there with children. At 55 years old, there's gonna be grandchildren or what have you. And the only way that they're gonna get to Smith School, because we have pavement all the way up to the little bitty wood area that's gonna connect us to them, would be to come across our, and most of our people are older people. There's very few children that's ever been there. And that means all those little children will be walking on the pavement, which will go right around the corner to Smith School. Now, he did say, I think he said a while ago, that they were willing to put a fence up, which would prevent that. But we're old, and people are not used to having children there, and those cars backing out. And I mean, I would be scared to death that I might hit a child or something. And I think most of the people that live there feel that same way. But I think he said he could get them to approve a fence, that it would at least block off that paved way to Smith School for children who might be, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Porterfield. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
There's one thing I'd like to add, if it's okay.
No.
Andrew Carter again. The, the issue was Meben, I was advised by Tad, was it Tad? Which, Tab? I'm sorry. I couldn't, what was his last name?
Bullard.
Bullard. That both Meben and Graham rejected this project. Meben only. Graham supported it, but you're not there. But they didn't go to Graham, and Meben rejected it. And so, seems reasonable that it should still be rejected here. Also, everybody over there at Delaney is gonna be tax, you know, we're all taxpayers, and the folks that are gonna be moving in there or not. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
I'd like to say that there's, Wayne Lockman, I'm from 2223 Delaney Drive. There's nothing wrong with developing that piece of property for the type of people that's needed. The problem we've got here is greed. It's too big a project for that property. We've hurtled. Great presentation here about expanding parking spaces. Well, I think the city council probably went through the same thing with Cedar Ridge. All you have to do is drive down South Church Street, past Cedar Ridge, you see cars parked on the grass all over the place there. You've got the potential here of having 200 drivers. That probably is gonna leave you in a range of 110 to maybe 130, 140 cars. If you're gonna have a development, you gotta plan for the parking. I've heard, I don't know if it's substantiated, that a waiver was issued so that the back of the property could be closer to the back of the line, property line. I get a question there on fire safety. Has anybody checked with the fire department, if there's a fire in the center or the back of this building, how are they gonna be able to get back there to fight that fire? I worry about that kind of safety, especially with the closeness to the back buildings in our development. So, it's not just our safety, it's the safety of the people in there. If they're gonna be elderly like us, I wouldn't want to be scurrying down four flights of stairs in the middle of the night to get away from a fire. So, I think that has to be taken into consideration as well. You want to develop the program, take the greed out of it, make it a size that is functional for that piece of property. You want to develop for 72 units, and I'm sure it's needed here in Burlington, find a piece of property that's big enough to put the proper development on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Kim Crawford. I'm a resident of Burlington. I work in Burlington. I'm also an employer here in Burlington. I think what we're talking about here is thriving communities, and investment in our community is what we're talking about today. But more important than that, we're talking about affordable housing. So, I want to talk about what affordable housing is. Affordable housing, when designed properly, fits the community's character in size and style. Affordable housing is affordable in the sense of being less costly to live in because it is supported by financing from a variety of public and private sources, not because it's cheaply built or operated. Affordable housing does not increase crime. There is no correlation between safe, decent, and affordable housing and crime. Studies show that when, what does cause crime and a host of other socioeconomic ills is community disinvestment, overcrowding, lack of jobs, and community services. Failure to build affordable housing leads to slum conditions of overcrowding, absentee owners, and deteriorating properties with no alternatives available to low-income families. There is no evidence of an increase in crime resulting from the introduction of affordable housing into any neighborhood. In fact, much of the affordable housing now being developed in many cities and neighborhoods replaces broken-down and crime-ridden buildings and can serve to reduce the crime, the neighborhood crime rate. Careful screening, property management, and security measures help assure that illegal activities do not take place, and that if they do, they are dealt with swiftly and decisively. Most affordable housing residents want nothing more than to become part of a quiet, peaceful life of the surrounding community. They have sought out affordable housing so they can live independent and self-sufficient lives. Affordable housing positively affects property values. Like other similar studies, one from Wayne State University in Michigan tracked property values before and after affordable housing was built, and found that affordable housing often has an insignificant or positive effect on property values in higher-valued neighborhoods and improves values in lower-valued neighbors, neighborhoods. In addition, research has found that affordable housing has no negative impact on the price or frequency of sales of neighboring homes. Because contemporary affordable housing is attractively designed, professionally managed, and well-maintained, it preserves its good appearance, usefulness, and value over time. It will not reduce the desirability of the surrounding neighborhoods. Property values are affected by a wide array of factors, such as neighborhood desirability, characteristics of the housing being sold, and the overall development of the prosperity of the area. And it is unlikely that one affordable housing development would adversely affect the property values of an entire neighborhood. Affordable housing is a community asset. Affordable housing is an asset to our community and part of the solution to our community's issues. Affordable housing enables Burlington to attract and retain employers who require affordable housing for their lower-level employees. The high cost of housing is one of the business's most frequently cited impediments to recruiting and maintaining employees. Home building creates a significant number of jobs and generates tax revenues. Home building can generate three to four jobs for every one onsite construction job. Home building creates a significant amount of indirect economic activity as well. Construction wages generate more ripple effects, adding purchasing power and sales taxes than most unskilled service jobs add. Affordable housing developments bring federal, state, and private subsidies to local communities. These subsidies in turn support existing local jobs and create new ones, particularly in construction and service industries. Affordable housing, including housing with supportive services, is the most effective way of helping the most vulnerable members of our community, such as seniors and the disabled, reach their potential. Without this kind of assistance-
30 seconds.
-higher levels of public service are required. And of course, access to affordable housing enables low-paid workers and others avoid homelessness and to avoid the need for public benefits. Affordable housing enables individuals to stabilize their lives so they can pursue jobs, access needed services, and deal effectively with any problems they may have. Investments in projects such as the Tri-Bac Court sets Burlington apart as a community, a thriving community, one that arises out of the fundamental truth that all people, regardless of income or social status, deserve healthy, beautiful homes where they feel safe and that the connection of the foundation, and is the connection of a foundation of a thriving, affordable housing community, communities that I believe we want to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
I'd just like to add two comments. I don't think anybody in the Delaney development talked about increased crime, just increased foot traffic. The second thing, our neighborhood does not have rundown, vacant homes that can be bulldozed and replaced with something better to raise the value. All we have is existing homes whose values could be affected adversely.
Thank you. Anyone else over here that would like to speak?
May I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Who's?
Comments from council?
I have a couple of questions, Mayor, if I could. Mr. Bullard, the, you say you have two existing complexes, one in Ronach Rapids and other in Moxville?
Yes, sir.
How big is the one, you may have mentioned it in your presentation, how big is the one in Ronach Rapids? one in Ronac Rapids?
It's a 40-unit development.
How big a tract is it?
If I recall, it's right at five acres in a kind of a more rural segregated area of town. And we currently have 42 parking spaces on that one.
What, now, with respect to Moxville-
Yes.
How big a complex is that?
Fifty-six units on five and a half acres.
Got it. That's all I have at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments from council?
I just want to clarify a couple of things with regards to what current zoning will allow to go there versus the proposal because it was indicated that we're just asking for 14 or 15 additional spots. But I don't think that's entirely correct. I think current zoning is going to require that the footprint be different. Is that right? From four stories to three?
Yes, Mr. Butler, the O and I designation does allow the multifamily, but it does change the dynamic just a bit. The height restriction is reduced to three stories or 45 feet.
And there is a parking space change with O and I, one and a half parking spaces to each unit, is that correct?
That is correct.
As opposed to the one with MFA?
Well, they're asking for the one because it's for seniors, which our board does allow. But if they do the amount of rights, they've got to go back to the one and a half. That's correct.
Okay.
So is the building that's going to be constructed, will it be three stories or four stories?
They're asking for four stories under the conditional zone.
Okay.
So my point, just as a matter of clarity, is they're not just asking for extra units, they're asking for extra height and extra parking as opposed to what would be currently allowed if they just operated under the current zone?
Could I follow up just a second on that while we're on that point?
Sure.
What is currently allowed, you know, assume no request for rezoning? How many units can be put there?
O and I allows multifamily as a matter of right, but it has to go by the nearest residential district. And if you can see that the nearest residential district is MFA.
Right.
Based on the mix of units that they're doing, which is 50% one-bedroom, 50% two-bedroom, they could max out at 58 units under MFA requirements. But it's based on a certain amount of square footage per unit based on how many bedrooms the unit has in it.
Okay, I thought I understood correctly, you know, 58 units. So they are indeed asking for 14 more.
14 more units, that's correct.
Plus the height, like Mr. Butler. Yeah, his way.
They're asking for the height because the O and I doesn't allow it, but the MFA does.
Okay. Okay. That, that's it. Thanks.
Another question I have, I think maybe to Mr. Bullard. There's a, the gray area over in that area, maybe I'm asking the wrong person, the gray area there is lower on the western side of the piece of property. I don't know what the height level is between the two properties, between-
If you're moving from a western, an eastern boundary to the western side of the property, the neighboring properties do increase in elevation compared to ours. So our site actually sits lower relative to our neighboring properties on the western side as opposed to the eastern side.
Okay. The other question I have too is, with the buffer zone around there, okay, I know that there's trees and things around there now. If this should pass, are you looking to put a fencing around that as well as leave the buffer there, leave the plant buffer there?
Well, by installing the fence, I believe we would have to probably remove a few trees. But we have also offered to the residents that we would replace any removed trees with Leyland cypress, six feet tall at time of planting. And as we all kind of know, Leyland cypress grow about four to five feet a year. So in a matter of five years, they'd be over 20 feet tall, 25 feet tall, so.
And then the lighting for the property, there's no overflow lighting-
No, sir.
-that would go over to the development?
This would not create substantial, there would be no lighting pollution to our neighboring properties as it would be directed downward to the property to provide security allowing around the nearest perimeter.
And that. I think somebody mentioned that there, you see the sunset in the afternoon by putting the four-story up, that they may not be able to see that. With the grade level, is that still going to be the case?
Well, with the grade level, our, early indications to us appear that while we may, if approved and we get approved for four stories, again, just on the center portion of it, about 14 units wide, 16 to 18 to 20 units wide on the very perimeters, the very perimeters would be three stories tall. So it's just the center corridor that's going to be four stories. And with that elevation change that you asked about, I think the net effect is our fourth story may be about four to five feet higher than our neighbors. But again, we would be over 130, 150 feet away. And with the tree buffering that would be in existence, plus any replacement Leyland cypress that we would have, you would have somewhat obstructed views just by perpendicularly looking across the property, so. I'm sorry, if that was confusing. I think you kind of confused me as well. So I apologize. Ask the question again and I'll try to be more clear.
Let me just try to get clarity on it. Are you saying that the only portion of the building that is four stories is the center portion of it?
Yes, ma'am.
The rest is all three stories?
If, if I may, we have an elevation here that I can show you, and I think you have one. So if you see, you've got four elevations in the center that are four-story, and then there you've got two additional elevations, one on each side, that those are three stories.
Okay. Okay.
The bulk of the building, as we're hearing, is mostly four-story.
So you call it like it is.
But it is, as a matter of fact, a three-story in a four-story building, so calling it like it is, it is a three- and four-story building.
Mr. Mayor, if we could get Joey to give one, if I'm doing my math right, under existing rights, 58 units at one and a half parking places, that would require 87 onsite parking places, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. With the existing ordinances as we stand now, what could be built there?
Do you tell me about it? How many acres is this?
Other comments?
I guess how many acres is this?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm rendered speechless here. I, on the one hand, I see this tremendous pent-up demand for affordable housing. And on the other, I, just hearing those facts about the number of units and the amount of land, I have to say that's turned my head. And I really came in here thinking that they had responded to all of the objections that I had, the traffic and a traffic light on Church Street. But I'm afraid I'm struggling here with the size of the project once I heard that.
You know, could I follow up on just a minute? I, like I said, I may have the figures wrong, but the Ronac Rapids, let me make sure, it's 42 units on five and a half acres, is that pretty close?
Forty units on five acres.
Forty, forty units on five acres.
We have 42 parking spaces.
Okay, forty, okay. So you've got 40 units on five acres, right? And in Moxville, you've got how many units on what?
Fifty-six at five and a half.
Okay. I think I got it now. Thank you.
So I guess the question that I have is, the project doable at the current zoning?
Yes, ma'am. We could proceed with the property at 58 units. And in doing that, we would have to reduce some of the architectural, architecturally appealing aspects of the property, would not be able to do the fencing, we would have to reduce some of the amenities that we were serving. And it becomes a property that doesn't meet the need that is here. And essentially, while we will do the best property that we can, and we will still put our name on this property, and we will still put our reputation at stake on this property, and we will operate this property to the best of our abilities, which we would contend are better than most. We feel, as proposed, at 72 units, we look at this as sort of an urban infill for the city of Burlington. It's a vacant property of land. The zoning ordinances of MFB allow that type of density. That's what we're asking for. The comprehensive land use plan and the zoning ordinances are set up to where, and history shows that this property was once on a larger parcel and pieces have been taken off of it, zoned to B2, which would allow us to MFB by right, if I recall correctly. So the city has been going, if it had been rezoned to B2, again, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation, and we wouldn't be trying to work with our neighbors, although we would. But they wouldn't have this capability of input on it. So we feel this being an urban infill type development for the city of Burlington in what is an extremely high opportunity zone, traffic from this property is nothing compared to commercial uses that could go on the site. There are multiple studies that show the peak hour traffic impact from a multifamily housing, apartment community have half the impact that retail and even less of the impact that commercial would have on this site, which would be allowed at six stories if it were non-residential use. I can't remember what the story was, but you could have a non-residential use under O and I, go above four stories on this property, bringing commercial use. They're bringing substantially more traffic than we're proposing. Our existing portfolio of around 2,000 units, we have on average about one car per unit in our communities. That's why we would, that's why we would propose something like this. If we did not feel that we could develop, own, and operate this to the best of our abilities, and that we couldn't, you market this property as something attractive to both the community, to both the city, and the residents and population that we will be targeting, we would not be coming to the city of Burlington to ask you these favors and to help us out to bring what we feel would be the best possible development for that site.
Yeah. Last night, you answered all of my questions really well, and I do, I do believe you that you want to do a good development here. And I do believe the residents really don't want anything there at all. I get that. I don't have power over that, nor does anybody on the council have that. We can't stop something from happening there. But I'm just trying to make sure that it's the lowest impact that it can be that would make people feel comfortable. I had really hoped that you all would have worked something out in your conversations, I thought, earlier this evening, and I was hoping we'd be able to come together in a way that-
And you were there last night, Councilman Hikes, Councilperson Hikes, sorry. We did invite the residents of Delaney to please send us recommendations, suggestions. We held another meet and greet from 5:00 to 6:30 before this. We were downstairs until 6:50, actually, hoping that they would come as a focused group saying, "We understand that you want to build this, and we understand there's a need, but for us to feel safe and secure with this development, here are the conditions we would like for you to try and meet." Because with this zoning, we're asking for, yes, decreased parking requirements, even though we are doing everything we can to provide 20 to 30% more than required, and also working with an adjacent property owner to provide specified off-site guest parking, so the Easter Sunday parking, if you will. So we're asking for conditional business zoning, and we've invited the members of Delaney and other members of the community to give us conditions that you would like to see, and we will do our absolute power to be best neighbors for you and make some of those come to fruition and be stipulated as a condition of our rezoning for this site. We have never been communicated with by Delaney crossings of any conditions except for the meeting last night, and that was the first time that they've actually come out in force to make any comments to us, even though we've reached out to them a week in advance of the meeting last night. We reached out to them a week in advance of the first meet and greet we had, and it was to no fault of our own that they weren't notified, so they say, until like the day of. We've done public outreach, and we've communicated with our neighbors and offered them many opportunities to provide suggestions.
Excuse me, excuse me, thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Continue, sir.
So in summary, we're trying to be good neighbors for Delaney Crossing, for the Westcotts, for the Gala Shopping Center. We're trying to build what we feel would be an absolute beacon for the city of Burlington as far as what can be done for affordable housing in this community and targeting the largest growing population sector in the nation. 23% of the residents of this community fall within the 55 and older. And as I had mentioned, there are approximately 550 households right now, over 550 households that are in need of this type of housing.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Comments from council?
I wish that there is a need of affordable housing here in the city and in the county. And I wish that you guys were able to work things out to get this to happen. Nobody wants affordable housing in their neighborhoods, just what it boils down, just the way it seems. So, you know, I appreciate you guys' effort trying to put something there, but I just wish you guys were able to work together to put this together.
May I make a motion that, based on the conversations that we've had tonight and the input from the citizens and the conditional changes of this project not seeming to fit, I would make a motion that we deny the request from the petitioner.
I'm going to second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda will be, so that means the motion failed, okay? Next would be public comment, period. Any public comments? Chief?
Mayor?
Sir?
Maybe it's okay, motions failed, but maybe we need to clarify where this stands at now.
Okay. Go ahead, then.
If I'm not mistaken, the motion failed for the conditional zoning, but that does not mean that the existing zoning, that the construction can be done based on the existing zoning regulations.
Just for, just for the information, Joey, why don't you come to this mic and just explain to both sides where we are in reference to what can happen on that piece of property at this point in time?
As I had stated earlier, they can develop this type of multifamily development on this property currently as it is zoned with O and I. The O and I allows multifamily development. It goes by the nearest residential district, which is MFA multifamily. That density requirement is based on a certain amount of square footage per one, two, and three-bedroom units. And based on the way that they're doing it, 58 units would be the max, doing it at a 50/50 split. That number could fluctuate one or the other if they did more one-bedroom units or more two-bedroom units. The setbacks for MFA, they meet currently, they would have to meet those setbacks for, do it as a matter of right, and the parking would increase to one and a half units, one and a half spaces per unit. So it is, as a matter of right, the property can be developed for this use.
Any questions for Joey? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next item is public comment. We have none at this point in time. City council comments. Volunteers are needed to the Stanley Creek cleanup Saturday, April 25th, 8:00 a.m. until noon. We can contact who? Ms. Ward?
Chester Patterson.
Mr. Patterson?
Chester Patterson.
Chester Patterson, okay. Also, congratulations to Renee Ward for being elected on the National Board of Directors for Shatoma. Congratulations. Also, to Councilmember Butler, congratulations to his daughter, Megan. She will be graduating May 2nd from the University of Alabama, graduating summa cum laude, which means 4.0. Congratulations, Councilmember Butler.
More like her daddy.
Yeah. I think she takes after her mother. Any other comments? Ms. Hikes?
I just want to make sure that the residents of Delaney Crossing realize that there can be a building on that property. I don't want you leaving thinking that nothing's going to happen because it is now, it has to be a smaller development than what was, they were proposing. But there will, in fact, they have every right within the zoning that exists now to build something there that would be 58 units. Does everybody, is everybody clear on that?
Everybody, try to be careful.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tennessee Schiltman.
I'm Tennessee Schiltman, and I live at 2221 Drive. There is one, I know they're going ahead and build their thing. Would they please put up a fence?
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I hate to be selfish, but we've got a very secure place there.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just worried that the security is going to be jeopardized.
I understand. Thank you so much. Any other comments from council? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.